Free video, please. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for the November 21st, 2017, meeting of the Buncombe County Commissioners. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As our community and our country look forward to celebrating the Thanksgiving holiday, let us have a moment of silence before we begin this meeting this evening to reflect on the many things that we have to be thankful for. We live in one of the most beautiful places in the world. We live in a free nation where differences of ideas are resolved through democratic processes rather than through violence. Please join in a moment of silence during which you may offer a silent prayer of Thanksgiving or reflect on the things that you feel thankful for in this season. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And thank you again for being here. I'll ask everyone to please silence your cellphones as the meeting gets started. And I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all County Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the Governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the Board this evening. It's now time for public comment. Let me just review our public comment procedures. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the County Manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. And the Board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject that's been previously presented to the Board during the same meeting. And I apologize, I did not mention when I reviewed the agenda earlier. We will take public comment this evening on the medic emergency ambulance franchise and the resolution authorizing execution of a Greenway easement to the city of Asheville. So if you're interested in either of those topics, I'd suggest you hold your comments until those items come up. But if there's anyone who would like to address the Board on any other topics now is your opportunity. And please share your name and where you live when you come forward. Anyone would like, is there anyone who would like to comment? Yes ma'am, you can start. No problem, just come on up to the podium right here. And there'll be a couple of lights. When the red one comes on, your three minutes is up. I think when the yellow one comes on, I think you've got about 30 seconds.
Can I have just a moment before we start the light?
Sure.
Okay, just because I have a whole lot to say. Mr. Belcher warned me of three minutes, and unfortunately, that's not enough. Just have a couple handouts for you guys to take away with you today, maybe to help show you what I'm trying to do. But my name's Monica Kreis from Candler. I've been working very hard to launch a nonprofit against the opioid epidemic. It seems to have affected not only just my community, but communities across the United States. Personally, I've been impacted not just by friends and family, but myself. I stand before you, addict in recovery, who is firmly in control of her world. Unfortunately, I won't ever be sober because I do get my medicine, which allows me to live my day-to-day life. But I had a great support structure. Not everyone unfortunately has the same kind of family support that I got. I've worked one-on-one with a lot of addicts and their families, and have personally seen how much it affects people, just the destruction it causes. I've heard a lot on the news about the epidemic, about everything that's done wrong, about just everything bad. And I don't hear very many solutions as far as what we're going to do to fix it. I've been on the streets in Candler. I go out just like this, believe it or not, in my heels, picking up trash on a very regular basis. I've talked to people. And even though there's such a huge difference in age in being in the Bible Belt, anything you can think of, there is such a diversity in the community. However, everyone does agree that this is a problem. But not only is it a problem, but in Candler specifically, there is nothing for our youth to do. There is nothing to distract them from the drugs, from anything, because it's such a rural area. We don't have the resources to get out. So I want to utilize areas in Candler to bring resources to the youth, so that hopefully we can rise above the drug statistic that we've become. As I said, I've not really heard anything. So for the last eight months, I've been putting my pumps to pavement, and I've been going out, finding out what our youth want, what's going to interest them, what's going to keep them from going out and becoming that statistic. Driving theaters, paintball fields, aerosoft, things of that nature would be so great. I understand that budget is everything. Unfortunately, the world revolves around money. So along with it, I also wanted to propose bringing in a system of barter. When you don't have money, you have to work with what you have. And the question I pose to people is, okay, I have a drive-in theater, and you want to see my movie. Maybe you want to go on a date, maybe you want to take your family. But we don't have cash, we don't have credit cards. How are you going to pay? And that's the moment when I see that light in people, and they realize that they have something to offer, something that they can give back, whether it is trade, construction, electrician, or if it's just time. Because it doesn't take anything to go down to your local store and pick up a bag of trash. I've spoken to a lot of small businesses around Candler who support me and would support that kind of system, because it does bring in the volunteerism that the Sustainability Plan helps outline, which grants are another one.
Okay. Your time is up. But thank you for sharing this information, and we'll all look at it, and we look forward to talking further.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, let me encourage her to come back too. And Jim Holland, if you get that information, if you could reach out to her and have a conversation where she'd have more than three minutes, that'd be great.
These aren't very well put together, by the way. It's very hard, and I just have a high school education, so I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica. All right, who's next? Okay, great. The next item on the agenda is a review of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and agree to following the remainder of the agenda as published? There is a motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Inca High and Owen High FFA chapter report. And I think Kristi Cheek with Buncombe County Schools is going to introduce the students and get this started. So thank you for being here. I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairman Newman, Commissioners and guests. It is that time of year certainly that we're always thankful for. And I want you to know that, number one, we have a lot to be thankful for, and I'm going to say that some of that is sitting right out there. I want to thank you all as a Board of Commissioners, certainly for your support of education, career and technical education as a whole, and on one specific note, help with the barn at Owen High School. That was certainly a gift. Last month, I had the great pleasure of traveling to Indianapolis with these students for FFA, and your heart would beam with joy when you go and see what tremendous skills these students bring. I can't tell you, I just think that they're marvelous. You know my passion for career and technical education. But what I see too is when our employers within our community say, we need people that can communicate with each other, we need them to work together as a team, we need them to bring these skills with them. I can tell you, these students can do all that and more. So tonight, this is nothing about us as adults, this is about them as students, bringing to you, FFA. And as we heard it, they need to come out of sows, plows, and cows to drones, clones, and technology, as we're all evolving and getting into an age where, number one, students are amazing at what they do, and they are using both academic and technical skills. We know that a well-educated workforce will reap for us economic prosperity in the future. So I want to first of all thank our students for being here, their parents, and administrators, and again you. But it's time to bring on the real stars, Inca High and Owen High FFA members, and administrators, and advisors. They're the real stars here. So come on up.
So if y'all introduce yourselves, and you want to tell them whatever you want to tell them.
My name's Zeb Holland, and these guys, we're the Ag Mechanics Team from Inca High School. We went and competed at a regional FFA competition, and as a team, we placed first. We were first, second, third, and fifth in the western North Carolina region. We went and competed at the North Carolina State FFA Ag Mechanics Competition, and as a team, we placed first there as well.
Awesome.
We were third, fourth, fifth, and eighth individually in the state of North Carolina. And we went and qualified for the National Convention in Indianapolis. We were first in the silver bracket as a team, and we were 13th out of 43 teams in the nation. We had two individuals in the gold bracket and two individuals in the silver bracket, so we did really good.
My name is Logan Fender, and in the spring, we traveled to Haywood Community College, and there we participated in four different events, which were welding, math skill, and knowledge skill, along with the natural resource. And these events helped us to prepare for the state competition in Ag Mechanics.
After we went to Regionals and won that, we had to practice for state. We practiced, two practices every week for three months, and we put all of our skills to use in the competition, where we had to do a 25-question math test, a 50-question knowledge test, welding activity, and carpentry activity, to see who's the best in the state. And what did we get? Third, fourth, fifth, and eighth? And we ended up winning that and going on to the National Convention.
Hi, my name is Eli Tipton, and at the National Convention, me and my team, we had a team event where we had to do irrigation and plumbing, then as well as five individual events, including natural resources, structural systems, wiring systems, small engines, and machinery. And, yeah. And then we all developed these skills that we'll use for the rest of our lives.
So just to close it up, like he said, these are things that we're going to be able to use for the rest of our lives. And we want to give a special thanks to the Buncombe County CTE Department, our advisors and administrators for everything that they've done for us. They've helped us with not only skills for agriculture, but also for life.
Hello, my name's Kevin Franklin, I'm the Ag teacher at Inca High School and their advisor. It's a great pleasure to work with these kids, and I want to say thank you to all of you to echo what Ms. Cheek said for your support of education and to career and technical education. It's unbelievable what you do for us. Just to put it all in perspective, what they've kind of done, there's 20,000 FFA members in North Carolina. So these four, and then Rachel, she was number one in her event out of 20,000 FFA members, and my guys were, of course, number one out of 20,000. And then national, there are 650,000 FFA members in the nation. There were 66,000 at the National Convention. And so it's just a great opportunity that these guys got to participate and compete against that number of people in the nation. And of course, just from little old Buncombe County and Inca High School, you know, they ranked so well. So again, thank you for your support. And Ms. Robinson, our principal, thank you to her, and she wants to say something too, I think.
I would like to say thank you so much to this team. They're an outstanding group of young men, great advisors. I am the very proud principal of Inca High School. I got the opportunity to travel with them to Indianapolis, and it was such a wonderful event. Learned so much about them and myself, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for supporting education, and particularly during this Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you very much for being in support, because what you do for us allows us to get the best and the brightest in Buncombe County, to teach our students, and I'm going to tell you, they're worth it. They're worth the best and the brightest, and thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to have that.
Hello, my name is Rachel Beaver. I was able to compete at the Employability Skills, also known as job interview, and this was brand-new to me. I had never been through an interview before, and as a little 16-year-old, that was kind of scary. But I also knew that was something that I was not going to get away from later in life. No matter if you're going for scholarships, or to college, or even just a simple job, you're going to have interviews. And so I knew that I would have to get over my little fear, and I would have to start talking to people. And so I decided to compete for Regionals, and somehow, I managed to get first. So I was like, okay, I'll go to state. And I managed to get first there. And I was like, oh, this is really cool. I got to Nationals, and I was surrounded by these amazing supportive people that were all in the same position I was. They were excited to be there, they had gone through the same process and the same trainings that I did. And it was amazing to get to meet these new people and kind of make these new friendships. I have friends from all across the nation now, which I never thought I would say. But I also have learned a lot about myself, and where I have strong points, but also where I have some weaknesses in my interview skills. And I can tell you, there has been a very sizable difference from my very first interview in March to my last interview this past October. And these are skills that are going to, you know, create my career, they're going to create my future. And I couldn't have done it without the amazing support of my advisor, Ms. Height. She has been by my side through this whole thing, you know, keeping me calm when I was, you know, about to lose it. But these are experiences that have changed who I am, and will help me build my career later on. So, thank you.
Hello, my name's Jamie Height, and I am the Ag teacher at Owen High School, also Rachel's advisor. And I really enjoyed getting to know her a little bit more and help her with her specific areas in job interview that you really don't think about unless you are on the spot in an interview. So we spent many times during our Smart Lunch sessions preparing her for the interview. We actually brought in quite a few community members to help as well as other teachers to just do mock interviews and get her prepared for that. So I had never experienced taking a student to that level of National Convention in a competition, so that was a first for me, and I truly enjoyed it. And I'm super proud of Rachel for doing an awesome job and just growing into a really talented young woman, also being on the regional FFA Officer Team as well. So she's excelling in her leadership skills, and I'm just very proud of her as a student, and all FFA members for that matter as well. They learn a ton in classes that involve leadership, public speaking, organization skills, parliamentary procedure, which is very important in events like this. So thank you all, thank you for your support, especially at Owen with our barn. I teach animal science there, and without that barn, the students would not experience near as much hands-on activities as they do. So thank you all for your support.
Great. Congratulations to all of you.
So again, just as a note of thanks, if we can get a great picture, because these are awesome, awesome students, and I just appreciate them so. It's just an infectious and contagious spirit. If you ever get asked to volunteer, please go volunteer, because you all help them, you are kind of the mentors that help us in the outside world. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. So can we get good pictures? It's always nice to be celebrities, you know. Thank you all.
As they're leaving, I have to brag on the Owen community in that the barn they're talking about, it's for the animals in their program, and the Owen community built that barn through all volunteer help.
All right, next up, facts about the child welfare system in North Carolina. And Tammy Shook is here to share this information with us. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having me, Chairman. I'm hoping Max is going to switch the monitor over so that my PowerPoint pulls up, but while that's happening, just thank you, Chairman Newman and Commissioners, for this opportunity to come and speak with you. Thank you to County Manager Stone for allowing us this opportunity. I wanted to introduce a few folks to you. Unfortunately, one of the program administrators that got caught in a meeting, she'll be here a little later, that's Katie Swanson. But I also want to introduce to you another program administrator, Rebecca Smith, and John Hudson, the Human Service Planner-Evaluator assigned to Social Work Services. And so they're with me tonight, and hopefully will jump in if I don't say everything exactly like I'm supposed to. So I wanted to talk with you about child welfare and what that looks like in the state of North Carolina. And in North Carolina, there's federal mandates that are handed down to the state, and then the state supervises all 100 counties, of which we're one. The federal government outlines those policies and those procedures, and has the funding that they give to the states is then passed down to the counties. At any given time, we're monitored by the state and the federal government. And currently, Buncombe County is a volunteer of one of 10 counties to be voluntarily overseen by the federal government for part of the Child and Family Services Review. We volunteered for that when Mandy Stone was the Health and Human Services Director, because we believe that it's important to constantly be looking at your policy and your practice, and doing everything you can to improve that. The state also started doing something called Process Monitoring Site Visits, and that's when the Division, the state, comes onsite and reviews our case records, our data, talks with their staff. And we've had three of those site visits in the last year and a half. So what we are hearing from the state is that we're doing very well. Are we perfect? Are we meeting every benchmark exactly where we should be? The answer is no, but neither is anyone else, because child welfare is a constantly evolving and growing and changing practice, and we are working very hard to be as good as we can in every outcome that we're supposed to hit. Buncombe County years ago invested in an electronic database, long before NCFAST was going to be available. And in fact, we don't go live with NCFAST until January for Buncombe County, but we've had that electronic case management system in place for a very long time. And that allows us to track cases from the point of intake all the way through to case resolution. We utilize our Planner-Evaluator, John Hudson, to help us track trends and data, and be able to identify where there's areas that we need to focus on, and areas where there are things that we might need to take a closer look at. The county also developed a Quality Assurance Unit or team that is separate from social work. And that's important, because there's a firewall between Social Work Division and the Quality Assurance Division, so that they're also reviewing our cases and our policy and our practice using the exact same instruments that the federal government and their state partners use. So we're able to do that internally, get that data, look at that data and trends, and just know where we need to focus our efforts in training and further education for our staff. So I'm going to quickly, as quickly as I can, go over an overview of what makes up child welfare in North Carolina. And I'm going to start by talking about intake. Intake is that point of entry for all of the information that comes into the child welfare system. And in North Carolina, the general statute says that every person is a mandated reporter to report suspected child abuse or neglect to their local DSS. So if you have any cause to suspect in North Carolina, you're required to report that to your local agency. When we receive that report with the allegations, we have to look at whether or not those allegations meet the statutory definitions of abuse, neglect, or dependency. And that's a two-level decision, meaning the social worker takes the information, and then that staff with a supervisor who's looking at that legislative statutory definition to determine whether or not we have enough information to accept that report or not. When we get a report from a reporter, we ask them, do you want to know the outcome of your report? And this is unusual, in that child welfare is very, very confidential, but a reporter can receive notification as to whether or not the report they made was accepted for investigation. And at the conclusion of the investigation or assessment, they get a letter that lets them know the resolution or the outcome of that case. Not confidential information, but the resolution of the case. If the case is accepted for investigation assessment, it's assigned to one of our Child Protective Services investigators-assessors, and there's two tracks for that. There's the forensic track, and then there's the assessment track. And the difference in those two tracks are the forensic track is for those abuse cases, those are your shaken baby, sex abuse, broken bone type cases, very severe domestic violence involving weapons would fall into that category. And then the neglect track, or the neglect allegations, go into our family assessment track. Both of those tracks have a timeframe of 45 days, and our goal is to get in there and work with the family and figure out what's going on, and make a decision within 45 days. The process of an investigation is really about information gathering. It's about looking at the family holistically, it's about having interviews face-to-face with the It's about having interviews face-to-face with the parents, the children, home visits to where the child lives, collateral contacts with people who might know information about the family, and how they operate day-to-day. We try not to be incident-focused, but holistically look at the family and how they cope with the stresses of their lives. At that point of initiation with the family, we're required to develop what's called a safety plan. So we're out there, we're investigating and initiation and looking at the family, talking to the children, talking to the parents, and we have to determine right then at that initiation, is the child safe? Can the child be safe with a plan or is the child unsafe? And that plan is developed on the spot with the family. And it can change over the course of the investigation as we gather more information. And I'll talk a little bit about what that means. So safe means that when we're there and we're investigating and we're gathering information, we're not finding information that leads us to believe that there's a problem with the safety of that child in that home at that time. If we find information that leads us to believe the child is unsafe in that home, we work with the family to talk about what could we put in place so that the child could remain in the home safe with a plan. But there are situations where we decide that the family has a situation going on where the child is unsafe and cannot remain in that home. And I'll talk a little bit further about what that looks like. At the conclusion of that assessment or investigation, we have to make a decision and again, this is a two-level decision between the worker and the supervisor as to whether or not there's enough information gathered that leads us to believe that the family needs ongoing involuntary services. So that's when we substantiate the case or find the case in need of services. If we decide that the family needs ongoing involuntary services, we transfer the case to our Family In-Home Section. And our Family In-Home Section is charged with working with that family to alleviate the risk or the harm or the safety issues that were identified during the investigation and to work with the family to make sure that we put services in place that help that family to be healthy and the child to be safe in that home. We try to do that within six months of engagement with the family in the In-Home Family Services case. And if we cannot be successful in keeping that child safe in that home, either because the parents are unwilling or unable, we might in fact take the case to court through juvenile petition without taking custody of the child and asking the court to become involved and order the parents to engage in services, or we may have to take custody at that point. The family is involved with creating the safety goals for themselves and the safety plans so that we are engaging them all along the way. It's their family, we want them to be engaged in developing of that plan. There are occasions where I mentioned earlier that we determine that the child is unsafe and that can happen during the investigation, that can happen during the family in-home case. And at the point that the child is determined unsafe and we can't come up with another arrangement that keeps the child safe, then we do have to take custody of the child. And that is the legal term of when the child comes into the legal custody of the Department of Social Services, in this case Beckham County Health and Human Services. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about foster care and adoption as I go through the PowerPoint. I want to speak a little bit about our current census or our current population of foster children in Beckham County. As of today, we had 347 children in care in Beckham County. That is a significantly higher number than we have had in the past and I'll talk about some reasons why in a minute. And we have 24 children that are in their ages 18 to 21 foster care. That happened in January when the legislature passed a new law that says we can expand foster care to include youth aging out of care from 18 to 21. It's a great thing, it's a great option for us. And we have 24 of those youth that are receiving foster care services through our agency at this time. I want to also point out in this chart that our two largest numbers of population of children in foster care right now are the ages of zero to two and the ages of six to 12. And that's very concerning to us. What we also know is that over the past two years of the children entering foster care, 70% of those children entered foster care because one or both parents had a substance So I mentioned that we use data and things like that to look at trends. And so we started noticing this trend of especially that zero to two population increasing very, very quickly and pulled together some community members and had lots of meetings and discussion about the crisis that we were seeing in the foster care system. And we're very fortunate to come up with some solutions that we think will help. So one of the things, one of the phenomenon that's happening particularly with that zero to two population is newborns being born into the hospital and being born dependent on substances and testing positive for substances and their moms testing positive for substances and us trying to work to figure out how in the world are we going to address this? Because what we were seeing happening, we would respond to the hospital, the child would come into foster care and then that mom would disappear. We would not be able to find her for three, four, or five months because if you're in active addiction, and the young lady talked about this earlier, if you're in active addiction, you're not focusing on what you need to be focusing on. And so we were losing touch with these moms and so they were losing those critical bonding moments with their babies, those critical times where they were bonding with their infant. And they weren't engaging with us and to try to work towards getting their child back. And so very quickly, they were losing all contact with their children. And I tell this story often where I'm in court and Commissioner Frost was in court with me and a mom shows up and is asking for visits with her baby that she hasn't seen in nine months and is crying and the judge is saying, I'm sorry, we've had to move on. And that was just something that was unacceptable to us. So we got together as a community and started talking about what could we do differently? And these were some of the initiatives that we have in place in Beckham County. And the first one is called the START Model. And it stands for Sobriety Treatment and Recovery Teams. And this is really exciting. We have gotten technical assistance from the state of Kentucky who has a START Model there. And they have actually seen a 70% reduction in foster care numbers for children entering due to substance abuse because of this model. And so this is what it looks like. There are parent mentors with life experience, meaning they have substance abuse history, but they're now in sobriety, and they have child welfare experience. And they're teamed with a child welfare worker who engages with these parents very early in that investigation phase where they go out with them and they talk to them and they can come from a place of saying, I know where you are, we can help you. The parents get assessments and those parent mentors actually take them to the first four meetings that they go to. And that's all about engagement and we know that that is the key to getting these folks engaged early and keeping them engaged. The other thing that we're very fortunate to have is prevention in Beckham County. That is an unfunded mandate and so the county actually funds two social workers to work in prevention. And those workers, because we have an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with Mahack High Risk OB Clinic, are actually going over and engaging prenatally with moms who want to voluntarily work with DSS to plan for the birth of their child. That is unheard of, it is absolutely phenomenal. And these workers go talk to these women because these women know they're going to deliver a baby that's going to be born positive for a substance, a CPS report's going to get made, and they know what's going to happen. So they're engaging with their prevention staff before the baby's delivered to come up with a plan, who can help? Can Grandma help? Can Aunt help? Maybe they're engaged in treatment and they want to be able to say, look, I'm engaged in treatment and I'm doing better. And they get, help gather those records and say, we're working very, very hard to provide that service to the moms who want to voluntarily engage with us. The other thing that we're doing is we have a co-located embedded child welfare worker on the mother-baby unit at Mission Hospital. And again, this is a collaboration between the county and Mission Hospital. She's an investigator and she is passionate about this population. And she is on that floor and she's the one that responds to these reports of these mothers delivering these infants. And how that is so different is it's one person who has great relationships with the nurses, the doctors, and she can go into the hospital room and engage with this family in a less traumatic way. And if they're not able to engage with her right then because they're upset, which anyone would be, she can walk away for 30 minutes and come back because she's housed there at the hospital. She's also engaged in the community and knows lots and lots about the resources that are available to parents and she's able to hook parents up to those resources in the hospital. And finally, I want to talk about Abus House. Western Carolina Rescue Ministries came to that meeting I talked about two years ago and heard my plea to help us be able to house these mothers and these babies in a way that creates bonding for them. And they are developing Abus House, which is a 14-unit recovery housing model in their facility downtown. Jim and I were there last week. They're very close and we're hoping it will open in January and that will house 14 women and their infants. And I just can't tell you what a blessing that will be to this community to be able to have those babies be with their parent in a safe environment while the mom's getting treatment and while we can make sure that baby is safe as well. I also want to talk about what child placement options are. So we have all of these children in care, where are they placed? Where are they living? Well, there's a lot of options out there. And the first that we try with children that come into care is called kinship or relative care because it's much easier and better for that child if they are staying with someone they know. So this could be a relative, this could be Grandma, this could be Aunt, this could be a friend of the family. The other type of placement is family foster care. And those are families who go through a licensure process, a background check, and become licensed foster families. We license foster families and there are a variety of private child placing agencies that license foster families and we use both. We use our own and other foster homes depending on what the need is. And then there's residential care. And that is a licensed facility. And so there's congregate care, which would be something like Black Mountain Home for Children, Brighill Home for Children. And then there is congregate care that is more geared towards mental health placement and that involves Via Health and our partners there when children qualify for a higher level of care. And then last one is the biological parent trial home placement piece of this. So as we work with parents and as they do address their issues and we can move the children home with them, that's called a trial home placement. And so they're back living with their parents and we're monitoring and trying to make sure that everything is going as well as possible. Another question that we get and that you might have heard in the media last week is, well, here's a kinship person or a relative and why aren't you placing them with that person? When a child comes into the legal custody of the department, we are required to make sure that they are in a licensed placement. And if not, the court has to sanction the placement that we have the child in. And when you go to the court and they want to sanction the placement, they want to know about that person and they want to know their criminal background of every adult living in the home, not just the person that's going to be the primary caregiver, but every adult in the home, their background, their criminal background. Do they have past child welfare history? Because that could be a concern. And is the home just environmentally at least minimally standard so that the, meeting minimal standards so that the child is going to be safe and well-cared-for there? So sometimes when someone is saying, I'll be the placement, we can't recommend to the court that they be the placement because of something in their background that prevents that. And all of those have to be court sanctioned unless they're licensed. So when a child comes into care, we have to develop a permanent plan for that child. And remember, I mentioned that we have to achieve permanency within 12 months? That's a federal mandate. And 12 months is not a long time. It sounds like a long time, but it's not a long time. And so when children come into care, we have to assign a permanent plan to them. And the vast majority of the time, probably 99% of the time, the initial primary permanent plan is reunification because we believe strongly that the best place for a child to be is with their own family if they can be there safely. And if they can't be with their own family through reunification, the next most permanent plan for that child is adoption. And we believe strongly that all children deserve a forever family, not a temporary replacement, not a place to spend the night and lay their head, but a permanent family, a forever family. We work in tandem with our court system, our Guardian Adlitem Program, which Guardian Adlatums are an independent third party appointed by the court. And their charge from the court is to make recommendations about what's in the best interest of the child. We meet with the Parent BAR, the Court, the GAL quarterly to talk about data and trends and things that might be a barrier to timely, efficient use of the court system. I want to talk a little bit about the cost of foster care. There's been some comments made from this podium and public comment that somehow Beckham County is getting rich off of foster care and adoption. And I really want to dispel that myth because it's just absolutely false. As you can see from this slide, and I don't normally read slides, but I'm going to actually read this slide directly. In fiscal year 18, there was 3.5 million budgeted to pay the monthly board payments. That's the payment that goes to the foster parent to help care for the child. And 1.74 million of that was reimbursed to the county by federal dollars. A little over $900,000 of that was reimbursed to the county by the state. But please note that over $900,000 of that budget is county dollars. We are not making money off of foster care. The second paragraph talks about that this county not only pays what we're required to pay to keep children in foster care through the foster care board payment, we supplement that to the tune of $630,000 for things like visitation. We provide visitation coaches so that families can get even more visits than we can possibly provide as just social work staff. We, those kinship and relative care providers that might not be licensed and can't draw down this board payment, the county sometimes subsidizes that care by giving them direct money to help pay for that placement. And childcare and medical care, not all those costs are covered by childcare subsidy or Medicaid. And so when those costs are incurred, the county is paying for that. We are not making money off of foster care. Let's talk about adoption. That's another thing that you've heard, that we're somehow making money off of adoption. And again, that is simply untrue. Adoption assistance is a payment paid directly to the adoptive parents for children that are deemed eligible. Not every child is eligible for adoption assistance, but most children are. And here's why. Children that are adopted out of the foster care system have experienced trauma just by the nature of being in the foster care system and coming from a home where abuse or neglect has occurred. A lot of these children have extensive medical needs or mental health needs or educational needs that may qualify for them to receive this adoption assistance payment. It is the exact same amount as the standard state foster care board payment. It is not an incentive to adopt, it is just another means of making sure these children have a permanent, forever home. In Beckham County, we are currently paying over, for adoption assistance, we're contributing to over 500 children who are reaching, are receiving adoption assistance. And you can see from this example, for the month of October, that our cost as a county, which is basically electronically drawn from the bank account of the county by the state every month, but for the month of October, it was over $56,000. Our budget for that portion of our part of adoption assistance for this fiscal year is a little over $800,000. That's county money that's being paid to support adoption assistance. We are not making money off of adoptions. I want to talk a little bit about the Adoption Promotion Program. This is a program that the federal government again gives to the states. And I'm going to actually read this because I want to make sure that I get it exactly right. The purpose of the Adoption Promotion Program is to enhance and expand adoption programs, to secure permanent homes for hard-to-place children, and to encourage partnerships between public and private agencies to achieve permanency for children in a timely manner by providing incentives for the adoption of special needs children. Participating agencies are compensated for adoption services that culminate in the finalization of an adoption of a child from foster care. And this is what that money can pay for. Recruitment of adoptive families, pre-adoption training, post-placement support, and the facilitation of legal procedures resulting in the finalization of an adoption. So yes, there are some incentives out there that if you are able to adopt children who are hard to adopt, older children, sibling groups, those type of things, and we work jointly with a lot of our private child placing agencies, there is some money that is awarded for those adoptions, but it is restricted to use only for the recruitment and the placement of future adoptions. It's not money that we can spend any way that we want to. We are not making money off of adoptions. I'm happy to report that in fiscal year 17, we completed 64 adoptions in Beckham County. Those are forever families for those children who have been affected and impacted by abuse and neglect. And last, I want to end by talking about what child welfare is. Child welfare is a balancing act with the safety and well-being of the child in the middle and the needs of the family on either side. and the needs of the family on either side. And we are doing all we can to provide services to that family to address the issues that brought them to the attention of child welfare to hopefully prevent those children from ever entering foster care. And if they do, we're providing services to that family to try to reunify them because we absolutely believe that's the best outcome. But if that can't happen, we are going to move towards a permanent plan for that child because it is about the child having a permanent plan and a forever family. The issues driving child welfare in Beckham County right now are the issues that you've had before you in many, many venues, the substance abuse, particularly the opioid crisis, and domestic violence. Those two issues on their own are incredibly challenging to tackle, as you know. But when you add into that mix the impact of those issues on children who are exposed to substance abusing parents and parents who are engaging in domestic violence, you can see how challenging the work of child welfare is when you're trying to balance all of that, make sure the child's safe, and provide services to the family. But here's the positive. We believe change can occur. We believe families can heal and children can be re-unified with their parents safely. And we believe that if that's not possible, children can have a permanent, forever home through adoption. We know that no system is perfect and we do not claim to be. But we know that our staff work every single day to provide the absolute best services that they can to the children and families of Beckham County. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for doing this. It's, I can't even put into words the feelings I get when people accuse people on the front lines of protecting children that they have an agenda or they're making money. And so for that, I'm sorry you had to go through this explanation, but I think it was really informative.
That was very good.
And I appreciate you doing that. And we value what you all do and the struggles and what you have to face every day. And it's something that very few people could do as confidently as Beckham County does.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It doesn't look like there's any other questions. So thank you for that very thorough and very informative presentation and for all of the work that you and your staff do for kids and our families in Beckham County. All right. Next up is Lisa Eby. We'll share some information about the Let's Talk campaign.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me talk about something that we're doing in the communications and PR with, in conjunction with Kathy's team, Max Cataldo, Cassie, as well as Stacy Wood and Ben Atkins from HHS. As a commission, you have demonstrated your deep investment in going out in the community and getting feedback from the community. And that has really been wonderful as an employee to see the success that you've had, whether it's been your coffee with communities or it's been the opioid town halls that we've had or it's been watching Commissioner Presley and Belcher trying to fit into the small chairs at some of the elementary schools that we've visited together. So it's been really very gratifying to watch you all as a commission engage with the community as you have. Tonight, what we're going to talk about is just another invitation that we're extending to the community to talk back and with us, to give us input and feedback. And the tagline for this invitation is simply, "Let's Talk." And it could be, "Let's Talk Budget," it could be, "Let's Talk Taxes," it could be, "Let's Talk Child Welfare." But the idea is, is that we want to be in conversation with our community. We want them to provide us with feedback. And so we're doing this through a number of different ways. We'll have these posters throughout the community which identify ways that the community can give us that feedback. They can call eight-two-eight-two-five-zero-four-oh-six-six and simply leave a voicemail. It couldn't be any easier. They can just call that number and let us know what's on their mind. They can also email us at letstalk@bunkhamcounty.org. And again, just provide us whatever information that they have. There's also this website that they have up here that shows you kind of what we're trying to do with the Let's Talk campaign, what kind of information and feedback we're open to, which is basically everything. And then it provides them with a form where they can fill out that information. All this can be done anonymously, but it can also be done by providing a phone number and a name if they want follow-up. We're also providing for our staff these simple wallet cards, which mine seems, oh, here it is, that had the Let's Talk logo on it. And again, you can just put these in your pocket and whip them out. And it gives all these different ways that the community can provide us with feedback. So we will take that feedback, whether it's through a voicemail, through an email, or through the input on the website, or through a customer comment card that they have in every one of our offices that the public are interfacing with. And then Kathy Hughes, Terry Orange, and myself will go through those comments, make sure that we're providing you with feedback about what kind of information that we're getting. And just as importantly, making sure that there's an issue that needs to be addressed, that we're getting the right staff involved and that we're addressing that. We envision having summaries of these on the internet for the community to see that we had people concerned about X and we addressed it and here was how it was resolved. So again, trying to create that feedback and let people know that when they speak up, things happen. And so that's the whole point of the conversation that we're trying to have with the community. I like to think of it not really as a campaign. This is an ongoing commitment that we have with the community to stay in relationship with them and make sure that they're helping to shape our government. So if you have any questions or ideas or concerns, I can tell you that we've had a very soft launch on this and we're already getting feedback from the community on the website, which is great.
It's great.
Yeah, I just got a couple, couple of comments. One, I have actually used this site to direct constituents to it because it does have a summary of some actions that's been taken in the last hundred and twenty days. And so a lot of the questions, the answers, when they, when they see those answers in print and they hear us talk about it and then they go there and they see it, it does add some credibility to it. And I'm grateful for that. I like the cards are a good idea. And you know, one of the challenges, you know, we're charged to fix what we find is wrong. And so that does provide a list that these things are being done. So when people think that there, there's not anything being done, then they're able to see that. So I think with that clarity, I do like the idea of it not being a campaign, but being a, just part of Beckham County and our site. And where they, ongoing, you know, this would be part of our personality as a, as a commission and as a, as a county. So, thank you.
I'm very excited to see what we can learn from the community and in addition to the work that you all are already doing by visiting community members. So any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, moving on. The next item on our agenda is the medic emergency ambulance franchise. And I believe Mandy Stone is going to get us started off on this topic.
Chairman and Commissioners, I know that Mr. Tully is going to make a presentation. I just wanted to start by saying that on behalf of county management and our emergency management service director that we support moving forward with this franchise, we want to talk about the detail of the remaining due diligence aspects, which Mr. Frue will help walk us through after I may hear from Mr. Tully. I first had the opportunity to meet with the Tullys in August and was impressed with their, not only the commitment they've already made to the community, but their desire to step up in service in a broader way. So just wanted to acknowledge that.
Hi, I'm Kermit Tully. And I'm extremely honored to be here tonight. I do have a slideshow presentation. I know I had invited you guys out. And I understand schedules and the things that are going on in the world today. So what I wanted to do was bring medic to you through pictures. And I think you'll, you'll really like what I have brought up forward. First off, we're planning as, for the franchise as medical emergency ambulance. We're doing business in Beckham County as medic. Our corporate officers are Sharon Tully, Kermit Tully, and Tonya Gibson. We were actually incorporated in nineteen eighty-nine, but we were established in nineteen eighty-eight is when we first started. Throughout the current time, we have held the Veterans Administration contract for thirty years. This contract entails everything from basic life support transports to critical care transports. And we transport a lot of veterans all over the southeast in the United States. So we have a huge commitment and they really appreciate what we do for them and we do it very well. The reason I can tell you that is the federal government has put us on a list as recommended agencies to take care of the veterans. We also hold a contract with Parker Ridge Hospital. It's, it's very similar. Care Partners Hospice. We are big on supporting youth in Beckham County. Everything we do supporting these youths is free of charge. We'll stand by for their football games, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts. They know who medic is. We responded about this time last year to the Forest Service, with the Forest Service in western North Carolina to the wildfires. We spent forty-five days in Bryson City taking care of firefighters. Victory Sports Racing, you'll hear about that this week. It's occurring at the Ag Center. We have a contract to provide services for the motocross events. We also provide services for NASCAR at the Charlotte Motor Speedway. Very proud of the things that we've done over the past thirty years. What you're looking at now is the types of EMS units that we use. All of these units are certified through the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services. The way things are inspected, there's an OMS inspector at our station at least once a year. And this is just some more examples. The, the unit on the right in front of City Hall, that ambulance can haul four paramedics in it and it can transport three patients at the same time. So that really helps in mass casualty situations. And we know the things going on in the world today. It's bad to say, but something like that is going to happen nearby. I feel certain. But we want to be prepared to take care of those situations. This is some more of our units. The one on the right is a picture, that's a typical day at Mission Hospital. We have some EMS support units. The one on the left is a supervisor's vehicle. That's always a paramedic that can respond to another ambulance, whether it be a medic unit or any other ambulance in Beckham County. He can go and provide assistance if they need it. The one on the right is an ATV that we use off-road. We also use that for large-scale events such as Belshire, which doesn't occur here anymore. But we do use it for the Mountain State Fair. That gives us a lot better accessibility into the crowds. This is the inside of one of our units. This is what it looks like when you open an ambulance up. You can walk up to it and grab any item that you need out of that truck. The seat in the picture on the right, that's a child safety seat. It's built into the unit. All of our trucks have those. You'll notice a twelve-lead cardiac monitor on the left. We have one of those for each of our trucks and we have three spares sitting in our supply room. This is our station. So in the first picture on the left, the first building top left, that's where the ambulances are housed. That also includes our crew quarters. That's where our paramedics sleep at night when we provide our twenty-four hour shifts. Building on the top right, that's the administrative building and it also houses a training facility. We have training on a daily basis with our paramedics. And then there's a large training once a month. It's the first Tuesday of each month. If any of you guys would like to come in and sit in on that, you're more than welcome to. The bottom building on the left is a fleet maintenance facility. And the one on the right is where our support vehicles live. The picture on the right, that's just an example of that first building with the bay doors open. The interior, obviously, we have offices and we are very proud of this. This is fleet maintenance, what the inside looks like. Our trucks are rotated through there on a scheduled basis. Or if something breaks, they can immediately take care of it. The reason we do this is dealerships are extremely expensive. We employ two mechanics. Both of those mechanics, one of them came from AV Tech and the other one graduated from UTI in Charlotte. They do excellent work. Picture on the left is what we call our dispatch centers. That houses our active nine-one-one so that we can put calls out only from our base, the calls that we receive on the telephone. We have the ability to communicate with other counties. The picture on the right shows what the radios look like inside of an ambulance. The radio on the bottom, the state mandated that we have interoperability across the state. In other words, our ambulance should be able to talk to any other ambulance, whether it be here, Raleigh, Charlotte, wherever. They also gave us permission to use this radios locally. We've not been successful in getting those programs here yet. But we really need that so that we can interact with our local departments. This is what we call an assignment list. It's actually an ICS document. It's document two oh four. This document explains what trucks are in service on any given day, who's on it, the contact numbers, and where that truck is located. This is sent to Beckham County's Emergency Operations Center every day. So those dispatchers know where our trucks are. This is inside the crew quarters. They have a day room where they can lounge when they're not on a call, offices where they can do their reports. Obviously, we have bedrooms. We can, right now, we can house four paramedics in separate rooms. And they have shower and bathroom facilities there. So part of our continuing education, the picture on the left is one of our paramedics teaching a class to all of our guys. The picture on the right is where we reach out into the community. This actually occurred at MSD in Beckham County. Our department went to MSD and taught all the employees in the operations section at MSD how to do CPR. We do that every year. Some training exercises. This event took place in Black Mountain. They call it a safety day in Black Mountain. It's at Ingalls. We do a drill that's called texting and driving. We're trying to get a message to these teenagers about what they're doing and what not to do and what can happen when they do text and drive. So this is an example of that. The picture on the left is Vermont Avenue this past Halloween. Thousands of people. We provided an ambulance for this street because of the mass crowd and the possibilities of what could happen. We wanted to ensure that they had some safety factors in place. Picture on the right is a local football team that we stand by for all their games in Beckham County. Like I said, we're very active with the Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts. Picture on the right, we went out and we showed our support for Tommy Bryson the day he got killed. That's in Mills River. Our special operations, like I said, we, we handle large-scale events. Our special operations, like I said, we, we handle large-scale events. That's the players doing that. We've got a, actually, we've done several concerts. There's one coming up in National Civic Center. It's called the Grius Concert. It was sold out. This year, they're having that twice on Saturday and Sunday night. It takes quite a number of paramedics to take care of that just because of the nature of it. I think we transported seven individuals out of that. All of those were opioid-related. All these services I just showed you are at no additional cost to the taxpayers of Buncombe County. And that's the end of my, my slideshow presentation. I understand Mr. Frew had a couple of questions for me?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. As Mr. Tully indicated, we received this application a couple of months ago. And there's no standard form as to how such an application comes in. This is not, this is not something that happens very often for a franchise application in the county. So Mr. Tully submitted some paperwork and an audit that has been, is required by our ordinance and has been reviewed by finance and it appears to be in order. And we worked with Mr. Tully to make sure that his, his application was complete. So one question I do have, and you brought that up at the beginning, was that medical emergency management is the applicant and would be the franchise holder? Okay. So at this time, what we really have to complete internally is the county's end of due diligence. From all appearances, it appears that Mr. Tully's and, and the Medical Emergency Ambulance Incorporated application is complete. But to this date, our ordinance requires that there's an investigation by county staff as to the abilities of the applicant to fulfill its obligation should it be awarded a franchise. And we haven't been able to do that as of yet. Under our current EMS plan, we have a variety of public and non-public ambulance providers. And we see this situation today as an opportunity to sort of bring in an independent third party to look at due diligence, to see how this applicant could provide additional service for the county and to see how that fits into the overall EMS plan. So on that basis, the county is prepared to move over as County Manager Mandy Stone indicated at the beginning. And we want to make this recommendation to the board that we, that the board make a motion to approve this application for a non-exclusive emergency transportation franchise in the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of Buncombe County. Contingent upon the completion of the investigation as required by county ordinance of the applicant's operations and a finding that these conditions for granting the franchise have been met. What the, what we need to do before the franchise can be awarded, our ordinance requires that the board find that the public will be served by granting the franchise, that the application is complete and accurate, and I believe it is, that the applicant has provided adequate evidence of his ability to provide the service, and finally, that the applicant holds all necessary licenses for OMS. Now, we understand from Mr. Tully that that is all true and accurate, but we need to have a, to complete our due diligence by the county's ordinance as adopted by the board. We would continue that if there's a motion by this board, as I just stated, that it also be, indicate that it provide with the assistance of an investigation be provided by an independent third party, namely Management Solutions for Emergency Services, their group out of Denver, North Carolina. And that the results of the investigations be brought to this board at the earliest opportunity. And if the conditions for granting the franchise have been met, then we recommend that this board issue the franchise and that at that next meeting, the contract for services and standards to, is to be considered and may be adopted. Now, I know this is a mouthful, but that's just to get us through the county's required due diligence and to bring in a third party to look at and to investigate the application and the overall EMS plan to make those four required findings by the board and bring that, and we want to bring that back to the board as soon as we can.
Okay, so let me try to-
Paraphrase away. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna have to wrap my head around it. I want to thank Mr. Tully for a well-done presentation. You're no stranger to this commission. This is not about us trying to figure out whether you can do the work or not. This is about how we can, can move forward with the franchise. I do think you read that, that wrong, though. I think you said non-emergency and what it says is non-exclusive emergency transportation.
Yes, sir. That's what it said before. The application is for emergency transportation, but it'd be a non-exclusive.
Non-exclusive emergency transportation.
Yes, sir.
So the, you said investigation, which actually, which I think it's a technical term for it, but EMS FES, which is out of Denver, is, they do coaching and training and review and, and things such as that. So that, that's basically what they would be doing is, is looking at the franchise. And, and if there's something there, there might be concern, then they just bring that back and we would, they would answer the question and we would move forward. Is that pretty much how you see it?
In brief, I spoke with the principal of that organization, Keith Boast. And in general, they would look at overlay maps and look at response areas and the overall current county EMS plan to provide such emergency transportation services and just make sure that this is a good fit, that it complements it, and just report back to this board.
So I'm assuming that the radio discussion or issue would be, would be handled at, at that time. I'm assuming that's so that when a call, when somebody calls in. I mean, my, my main concern and my main objective in moving forward with, this is my opinion, you know, with, with medic is that there's a need in Buncombe County for help. And you are qualified to provide that help. And so we want to look at the simplest way to be able to do that. So when somebody dials nine-one-one, whoever's, you know, we want, you know, as many people showing up as, as possible to try to help those folks. So that's kind of what, what my-
And I, I think so. I think I follow what you're saying. I think in the end, what we do would be to develop a contract for services based generally on our fire department contracts to require open meetings and financial records and disclosures and the assistance of, of yearly audits, for instance. And in terms of radios and equipment, I mean, that's something that EMS, our staff, local staff would have to be involved with to work with Mr. Boast's outfit. And the contract that provide, he currently has a Viper system, but that's an older state system. We currently have new PC compliant radios with the county. And that'd have to be arranged through a contract and to treat them as a, as an agent of the public, as an agent of the public entity, which is Buncombe County.
Okay, so I'm, I'm prepared to read what you-
Yes, sir.
As a motion and then the chairman proceed however we're supposed to proceed, but I'm prepared to read that as a motion.
Yes, sir.
So motion to approve the application for franchise submitted by medic, medical emergency ambulance. Do I need to say that different? Transport Eek? Transport Eek?
Medical Emergency Ambulance Inc. Doing Business as Medic.
Medical Emergency Ambulance Inc. Doing Business as Medic for a non-exclusive emergency transportation franchise in the unincorporated areas of Buncombe County contingent upon completion of investigation the applicant's operations and a finding that the conditions for granting this franchise have been met pursuant to ordinance twenty-two dash forty-three C. That assistance with this investigation be provided by Independent Third Party Management Solutions for Emergency Services that results of the investigation be brought to this board in, in regular session at the earliest opportunity. And if conditions for granting this franchise have been met and the franchise shall issue, then the terms and conditions of a contract for emergency ambulance services and standards will be considered and may be granted. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
I have a couple things. Mr. Tully, at the end of the presentation there, absolutely no cost to the taxpayers.
No, sir.
No one from the county will be working for you.
No, sir.
And another thing I was just aware of, got a note here, you had one of your ambulances inspected this week?
Yes, I did. The chief at Burnersville Fire Department inspected one of our trucks this week. It was one of our first-line trucks. He relayed to me that we had the full support of his fire department. Everything that was required to be on our truck was there and then some. We had plenty. I also want to pass along, the Skyland Fire Department Board called me this morning and advised me that we have their full support. Skyland has worked with us for thirty years, as, as well as Burnersville. But we sit in Skyland's fire district. They want to work with us. The south end of Buncombe County is full of people. And they're running one ambulance right now. When that one ambulance goes away out of any fire district, somebody has to respond. We're a very vital resource in Buncombe County and we want to be used. Our obligation and our dedication does not stop at the downtown limits. I had an incident and, just to tell you the kind of people that work for me. This past week, I attended a race in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. I was there as a crew member for one of the racing teams. My sister, Tanya, and another employee of medic was also there. While we were there, we witnessed a race car driver, what we call flash swat a wall. He was sitting on the racetrack and I stood there hoping that the racetrack had their emergency services in place. And within a short period of time, I figured out they didn't. So the crew members from medic responded to that. We pulled that race car driver out, onto the racetrack, called nine-one-one and began CPR. We tried every effort to save that driver's life. He died at the hospital. But it don't matter where we're at. Our dedication is to help the public. That's what we live for. All of our investments are around emergency services. Personally, I've been in my position for thirty-four years. My mom has been longer and Tanya's a little bit less. But among our entire staff, we have over a hundred years of experience. That's the kind of people that we're, we want to put out into Buncombe County to work alongside these fire departments. We're not trying to take anything from anybody. We just want to be another resource. That person that calls nine-one-one has the right to have the closest ambulance send, sent to him. If it's mine, that's great. If it's a fire department, that's great. If it's Buncombe County, that's great. Whoever, the closest one and the most qualified is who needs to be sent to that call. Right now, our hands are tied because of a franchise ordinance. That's ridiculous. I'm sorry, in my, in my line of work, we react. When we hear something, we react. We're not looking at the geography of where we're at. And the fear of getting in trouble for responding to a call in the county is there. We need to get way past that.
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I think there's a motion and it hasn't been seconded.
I didn't.
I'm sorry, it has been seconded. Thank you, thank you. Okay, please proceed.
Mr. Tully, I understand where you're at. And Mr. Presley's talked to a lot of people, talked to you. Everybody says, Kermit raced and Robert, myself, both raced, it's basically the river down to New Asheville Speedway. His parents came down there and basically, when he raced, they furnished an ambulance at the racetrack. He's wrapped, just what he said, or just a second ago. Whether or not a feud or whatever you want to call it's happened. But Kermit Tully, there was-
Was it a Presley? And then a Presley?
There's racing one now. Mr. Tully was racing. Gentleman just kind of pulls over and hits the wall. He had a heart attack, I think it was a heart attack. Kermit gets out of his race car, they pull the ambulance up there, he gets in the back of it and he works on this person. This driver. He leaves, he leaves the racetrack in the ambulance trying to save the life. That's why I have a hard time seeing this because he just, you know, the people moved his race car, they took the other guy's race car off the racetrack. You know? The ambulance part and saving lives is more important to him than anything that I can say. And that's, I'm just one person in this. Another thing I see, managing solution engineering services. Do we know what that's gonna cost us just to look at this? That's another thing that I'd like to know because I, I think there's probably a better way that we can do this without having to utilize that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fairview Fire used the same outfit last year for what I, I think was a more complex issue regarding their board and procedures and policies. And they hired this group to review bylaws, board procedures and all their personnel records and files. And also ended up bringing an action in Superior Court to have the bylaws in that community tossed out by Superior Court Judge and have new bylaws in place. Now, I do think this process is substantially more simple for the group to look at overlays and look at the EMS plan and make a recommendation for services. But they paid a little bit over ten thousand dollars for that service last year in Fairview.
Any sense of the timetable for that kind of review?
Yeah, I, I talked to Mr. Boast and just described briefly, of course, he hadn't had a chance to review anything yet. But he said it should be fairly simple to come back by sometime in January.
So a pretty quick turnaround from this point forward?
I think so.
Gotcha.
We will take public comment on this in just a minute, but just, Mr. Frew or Ms. Stone, or Mr. Tully too, but I'll just ask Mr. Frew first, DM. Do you, do we have information about, you know, this model of, you know, we have our, our fire districts, we have our county emergency response services. Is this model of also having a private sector for-profit licensed entity operating within that context, is that a, the more common model in counties across the state? Or is that, you know, is that relatively uncommon?
So I don't really know the answer to that, but I do know- I don't know what the model is generally across the state, but it's very common for the volunteer fire departments. So they're mostly professional fire departments. Now, they're all nonprofit five-oh-one-C-threes. So those are private corporations. So not all of our sixteen service districts that have, we have our fire department contracts with, have ambulances. But those that do, I think to the most extent, do it for some profit. For various services, the federal government Medicare, Medicaid reimbursements and whatnot. So it is, it is a source of funding for many of those departments. I think may, maybe nine departments, do you know the answer to that, of our departments have it? I think that's roughly correct. Which would be, which would be about half of the departments.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take public comment and then we can bring it back up and if there's other questions, we can discuss further. So I'm gonna open this up for public comment on the topic and are there any folks here who would like to speak on the issue? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Afternoon, afternoon, evening, Chairman, Board. For the past year, I've been embedded in Mr. Tully's operation. I'm CEO and owner of Help Disaster Management, which is also a company that does the exact thing that you have in front of you. I want to first ask you to really look at the word investigation. He's not under investigation for anything. You're evaluating. That's called a real-time evaluation. That's not an investigation. Secondly, I ask that if you're really gonna spend that money, really dig into a digger, bigger picture. Because is it really needed? Because I've been there. He needs to be granted the same ride as that orange and white ambulance out there on the street. Every EMS system in the United States is operating in a bottleneck. Insurance regulations- Insurance regulations, Obamacare, this spaghetti pocket you have of insurance has created expenditures that city councils and city governments can't handle, and allowing private ambulances into your ambulance services will relieve that bottleneck. So, I ask you to consider, consider that.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the board. So, any other comments on the motion, or the issue?
Just as a point of clarification, I don't know this industry, so is, is an investigation the term that we want to use when we pass the motion?
Right.
That, that is straight out of the ordinance, but this gentleman's correct. It's more of an evaluation of the application with the, being consistent with our ordinance.
So, what's a, what is the parliamentary procedural for me changing it to evaluation?
Can make a move, a motion to amend your motion and change, we'd have to, and change investigation to real-time evaluation?
Okay, so I'm, so I'm gonna make a motion to, a motion to amend?
I just made it.
You just made it. I'm gonna second your motion.
If the person who made it and seconded it accepted as a friendly, we'll just incorporate it.
All right.
All right.
So, I have a couple, a couple other words. I just want to be very, on my part, very clear that, that, that my intent and purpose in making this motion is to prove your franchise going forward. That is, you've been here enough. You don't need to tell us how well you guys do. We know that, we've heard it in the community. You need to, you need to leave with that bit of information in your mind. However this vote goes, you need to understand that, that that's the purpose of why, you know, I made, I made the motion, and I'm not gonna put words in people's mouths, but I believe that's the intent of those that will vote for this, so. But, you've been here planning, you're, you know, your, your commitment to the, you know, the children in the community in this, in Buncombe County is, is very, you know, precede you, you know? I do think the intent is to improve the nine-one-one response, not, not to improve, but to add to the nine-one-one response in, in Buncombe County, so that people feel, you know, safer in, you know, all the things we've talked about before, so.
I have one, one question. I do intend to vote for the motion, but I want to make sure going forward, now, as the county grows, I'm sure this will not be the last franchise that come before us. Do we have to go through this every time?
Under the current language of the ordinance, that's the procedure. Now, practice makes perfect, the more often we do it, the better we'll get at it. But, yeah, I think at this point, Commissioner Belcher's correct, we're just crossing some Ts and dotting some Is moving forward with this evaluation.
Thanks, you answered my question.
And, and I'm very supportive of this and, and your work. We're uncharted waters with people that suffer from the disease of addiction, and so I appreciate you doing this, but I, I'm very happy with the wording of the motion, and going forward, as a commission, I think we are determined to always cross all the Is and dot all the Ts, or reverse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She said.
Got it.
I think we in Adams.
One thing I have there, ten thousand dollars, is that per ambulance, or for the total inspection?
I would estimate that'd be a cap for the total invest, evaluation.
And who would be responsible for that payment? The county or Med?
County.
That'd have to be the county, I imagine, because we would be requesting it. Yes, sir.
I got another question. We've seen a whole lot tonight. We've seen what he has as far as the service. We've seen how long he's been around. We see he works for federal agencies. We've seen pretty well everything, you know, and he's been inspected. I would like to see this, that would be fine, but I'd like to see if we could resolve this. And if we needed to utilize solutions, whatever, that would be fine. I don't know, but, I mean, it's up to Mr. Tully if he wants to go either way. I'm gonna vote for the resolution. I just don't see us having to spend ten thousand dollars. I just know that it's took him X amount of years and everything to bring back to Buncombe County what you needed to be, for him to be able to even come forward with this. That's what I've seen. And, so, you know, he spent a lot of money to get to this point, to be able to do something that he was doing four years ago. He was doing this four years ago. So, but, I'll vote for it anyway. Mr. Tully's one that needs to determine, in my eyes, if, if this is okay with him. But, I'm not, I'm not interested, and truthfully, I would like to see if it happened before we spend the ten thousand dollars.
And also, one thing I think we ought to look at really close, is we got the holidays, and we know what the traffic's gonna be for the next forty-five days due. We want to wait until after all this high-traffic volume to look at this. Can we inspect a couple of them and get them going right now?
I, I think that's ultimately a board decision. I do, I think both Mr. Frew and I would, would make the point that if you look at your ordinance, we have to do the due diligence, which is, I, I would trust the Tullys with any member of my family on any given day, but my job is still to say that there's processes we have to follow to comply with the ordinance, and I think that's the recommendation we bring you. We really view using the outside consultant as expediting the process, because the work has to be done, the, the check in the boxes and making sure we've appropriately reviewed everything, whether we use an outside person or inside staff. And I also think, to the point that came up earlier, we view this relationship with this outside consultant to talk about our overall system, and how do we move forward in meeting the needs as we grow as a community in a way that puts less burden on the taxpayers? So, we view it as broader than an assessment of an individual potential franchise.
And you can correct any of that if it's wrong.
I'll, I'll just point out that the ten thousand dollar figure, I just called Chief Jones and asked him how much he paid, so that's where that comes from. When I was speaking with Mr. Boast, he says they're amenable to almost any kind of arrangement we can make, a quick looksee, a more thorough looksee, one-time payment or a contract over a term, so that's just to give you an idea.
And I, considering the, the Kermit, the, the current climate of our county, I'm very happy with this oversight and following process.
I'd also speak in support of doing the feasibility, well, the evaluation feasibility, whatever we're gonna call it. I think this is a, since it's a pretty important decision we're considering, and I certainly have no doubt that Kermit's organization and the team you have, I don't have any doubt that you guys are doing a great job and can, can continue to do a great job in, in the work. But, I do think, I do think we, you know, the, the real question in front of us is looking at, is the addition of this, of this franchise going to strengthen the overall emergency response services in Buncombe County going forward? And is this model of the, having this for-profit entity working within the context of the, you know, the, the public organizations that are doing it, is it a net positive contribution? You know, when you, when you think about it on a specific case basis, someone needs help, who's closest, it's really, of course, of course, it's very hard to argue with that premise, but I think we also have to look at the overall system of emergency response services we're planning in Buncombe County and make sure that on an overall basis, that this does strengthen our, our systems. I think, I think the, you know, just to be straightforward about the concerns I've heard about it, is that the, all the other organizations that in, provide these services, they have to make plans and budgets for the infrastructure, the vehicles, the staffing that they have, and, and they have to make, you know, their business model work on this too. And so, if there is a for-profit entity in the mix of that, then, I mean, one of the concerns is that they may have to raise their rural fire district tax rates, because part of the revenue they currently bring in to support the staffing and the equipment that they provide will be lost. And I think we just need to be, I just think we need to be upfront about the pros and the cons of it. And if it's really clear that the pros outweigh the cons from an overall planning standpoint, then, you know, I'll be, I'll be an enthusiastic supporter of it. I'll vote in favor of the, the motion to move this process forward, but I really do, you know, the recommendations of, of this organization that we're gonna ask to take a look at this, they really do matter to me. I think this is one of those arenas where there's, you know, this is a, there's people on different sides of this, and there's turf issues out there on all the different sides. I think we just need to get the, you know, I think having an outside recommendation on this will be really helpful in thinking through and confirming this is the right step to take. So, I'm, I'm supportive of the motion, but I really am also supportive of, of looking at all the, the best data we can get to make a final decision.
So, I gotta wrap up com, comment, just a couple things real quick, is that I think the choice of someone out of Denver, North Carolina is a very good fit for our area, for the, you know, the rural area that Buncombe County has, and I think that's a good fit. I also think that the, that it's pretty clear from the majority of the board that the, the direction is to expedite this. This is not something that we want to fool around with. It's holiday season, we need, I mean, you know, there's a lot going on, you know, the needs, needs there, and, I mean, if I was a medic, it wouldn't bother me a bit that, that, that these guys were gonna come in and look at your, look at that, and because they do that, they, they go in and counsel folks all over the place. So, I'm sure from your standpoint, I don't think you, I don't think you're sweating this one bit. But, I do think it's a, I do think it's a, a good move, because it takes the personalities out of it, and also think, you know, that if this is a model that we're gonna look at going forward, then this will establish a way to do it, to where it's not about personalities, it's not about turf, it's, it's about process, and about taking care of people and saving lives, and that's what this decision is all about. And I think that the addition of, of, whether it was them or someone else, management solutions for emergency services is gonna add credibility to the decision, but I, I do think I'm, I'm hearing that this needs to be expedited so that we can move on, so.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks for being here tonight. Look forward to talking further in the near future. All right, the last item under new business is a resolution authorizing the execution of a greenway easement to the city of Asheville.
Early night. What, what is it? It was a quarter.
Mr. Frew, still up?
Yes, sir.
All right. What you got?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as to this greenway easement option, I see Max is on the ball, so he's pulled up, but we have sort, we see on this map of where it says, near South Oaks, it says Highway one-ninety-one, the one-hundred-and-thirty-seven acre ferry road property is that tan area just to the right of that, just to the right of that one-ninety-one and the red stripe. The red line on the map is the overall current future plan provided, well, is conducted by DOT for the Buncombe County Greenway Easement, and you see it running from roughly the outlet mall down to past, bass, past Biltmore Park and over to Lake Julian. Max, if you can go to the close-up view.
Well, thank you for that.
So, there we go, right there in the middle, the tan area, that's, that's the ferry road property. And so, this is, we've been working with the city, I have, for, for a period of time on this. The city, this is around about, well, let me back up. The city has a right to an easement across this property pursuant to its previous work with Henderson County under the water agreement, when they had the authority, and we're gonna put a plant on that site. As that agreement fell apart some, some years ago, part of the resolution between the city of Asheville and Henderson County was to say, okay, well, we'll have the property, but whenever you sell it, you have to provide for an easement. So, the county bought this, as we all know, a couple of years ago, this one-hundred-and-thirty-seven acres, but we didn't have a definitive route for an easement. So, now we have a developer also who's nibbling at this property, and we've discussed that, and we're working on getting a contract for this property, the terms of which we can't really disclose quite yet, but for any developer to use this property for residential purposes, they need to know where the easement will be. So, this easement locates the easement on the eastern and southern lines of the property, fifty feet wide. So, the topography lends itself well to a easement in those locations, because they're, they're not easily buildable at all. So, part of, of that, part of the due diligence and hopes of our prospective buyer is to see that they have a definitive location, so they can get architects and engineers to map out the property and make sure they're not mapping and planning for something that would be in this easement. So, the easement's not as wide as it appears, of course, on that map, that depiction, it's fifty feet wide along the I-twenty-six side of the property and along the riverside of the property. Any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer, but this would be a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement to the city of Asheville from Buncombe County, and we don't know when that easement, or that greenway might be built, or the projected timeframe or expense, but that's just, that's just to hold the property for that future use.
Thank you very much.
So, I got a question. So, this has been an ongoing agreement with the city of Asheville on this property for however long, so this removes that, there's no more discussion between the city and the county regarding this property whatsoever. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The county owns the property now with just an undefined easement for greenway purposes, so now to be able to get into position to be able to convey it, and the county wants to convey the property, this board has set us in those motions, we need to have a definitive area for that, so any conveyance we've made would be subject to this easement.
All right, thanks.
And this greenway's also in the county's greenways plan as well, right?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I'm gonna open it up to public comment, is there any public comment on the motion? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, Mr. Frew. All right, board appointments, we have one vacancy for the county board of adjustments, so if any members of the public are interested in serving on the board of adjustments, we would encourage you to go to the county website and fill out an application and send it to Kathy Hughes, the county clerk. Couple of announcements, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth, county offices are closed for Thanksgiving holiday. November thirtieth, there will be an opioid town hall at the Fairview Branch Library from six to eight PM, hosted by District Two Commissioners Mike Fryer and Ellen Frost. December fifth at five PM, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners will hold their regular meeting at two-hundred College Street, Room three-two-six in downtown Asheville. There is no need for a closed session this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved it with adjourn.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Have a great Thanksgiving and travel safe.
Say, we set a record this time.